Are we good? We're open, ready to roll?
Okay.
All right, we will call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Been moved in second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those same sign, motion carries. Just let it be clear that Elisa's not here. She's on vacation, I believe. I don't think she's on. And Anthony called me late this evening and had an appointment with one of his children, so.
Oh, okay.
So it's just us three.
Okay.
Okay, so the first action item, I think. We, yeah, Steve's unmuted, but the first action item would be the approval of the service agreement for expedited executive search. Do you all have time to review that?
Yeah, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the Human Capital Enterprise Agreement as presented.
And I'll second.
Been moved in second to approve the Human Capital Enterprises Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those same sign, motion carries. All right, with that, Steve, you're up, if you can hear us.
I certainly can. Well, good evening, Jason and members of the board. I just want to check, are we comfortable on a first-name basis? I prefer being just a bit more informal, but certainly can use Director Rayner or President Rayner, but just wanted to check.
Certainly.
Well, now that you're asking, no, I'm Jason's preferred.
Well, thank you for that. The purpose of our meeting is to provide a general overview of the expedited search process, provide an orientation on the search activities, and to respond to board questions either about the timeline or search activities. We do need direction on two matters. First, board participation on finalist referencing, and then second, whether or not the board wishes to have finalists engaged by the firm with a third party for a comprehensive background check. So we'll talk about those as appropriate. In advance, I've provided an outline of our time together and just want to jump in, and if you've got questions on each of the topics that have been identified in that advanced organizer, please, we'll just take a moment after each of those items are covered and respond to any questions or take any direction that the board may have where appropriate, and then just move on to the next topic. Sound, sound, sound good?
Sounds good.
Okay. Given a conversation that Jason and I had this past week, our proposed timeline of activities includes the following dates and activities. Today, May 30th, is the planning meeting with the board. On June 7th, we would have the slate meeting with the board in executive session. On June 12th, 13th, and 14th, the 14th would be optional in the event that the board advances more than two finalists. We would conduct in-person finalist interviews in executive session with the board. On July 1st, that is the anticipated interim superintendent start date. So let's.
Oh, real quick, Steve, just wanted to clarify for everybody else, looking at the timeline as it related to the interview process, and with, well, me working a full-time job, we would have to do it in the evening. If it was an hour, hour and a half, two hours per candidate, you know, we'd be there at least six hours or longer. So I suggested we, well, actually, Steve kind of suggested maybe we break it up into a couple different days, the 12th and the 13th versus just the 13th, because we do have a meeting on the 14th as well. So it's gonna be a long week.
And we have three people that work full-time jobs.
Yeah.
Now, that was only, so, yeah, that's how I think.
Okay.
Yeah, we envisioned those being roughly two-hour meetings in total, approximately an hour for the finalist interview, 20 to 30 minutes of a debrief facilitated by me with the board. On the first day, we have an orientation relative to the interview questions, assigning the questions, some protocols around what to not say, and our responsibilities in terms of uniformly asking questions so that every finalist gets the same experience in terms of fairness and equitable access to the same content in the same manner. And then on the very last day, whether that happens on the 13th or the 14th, if you select three finalists to advance, we have an additional roughly 30 minutes to debrief and process an executive session on all three of the finalists or two of the finalists as a way of getting prepared to transition into open session to act on the sole finalist. So they're roughly one and a half to two hours in length. On June 7th, the slate meeting, we expect to present a slate of three to five candidates for the board to consider. We'll highlight the rationale for considering these candidates, will speak to their background and experiences and why that might be a good fit and match. Prior to the meeting, the board will be given a confidential link to the candidate materials to review in advance. We anticipate being able to ship that link to the board on the evening of June 5th. Given the compressed nature of this timeline, we've got a lot of wheels in motion behind the scenes in order to expedite this. I know that typically, we like to give board directors a good week to review the materials before we get into the slate meeting. But we simply don't have the luxury of time here. So I know that this puts pressure on working board directors and understand that that could, could be problematic. But given the compressed nature of the timeline, the, the the sooner, the soonest that we can pivot in getting all of those materials pulled together, including our own reference check on each of the candidates that are part of the slate, we just don't have enough time to, to do that. And that includes working on the weekend for Hank and I.
I had a question, Steve. I've heard from community members that they know of people that were interested in the board position or the superintendent position, whether it be interim or full-time. Do you have a list of people that you have in a pool? Are you going to be looking at people that are interested in a job outside of what you have in your business?
Yeah, first, if you hear of names that you believe we should consider reaching out to, please forward that information to me. I know that Jason has already forwarded a name that has come to him, and we reach out to those individuals to see if there is any potential fit and match and interest. Secondly, know that we just released, and hopefully you saw a copy of our E blast that we send out to our listserv subscribers. We have 40,000 subscribers nationwide. Jason and I were on a call a little bit earlier in planning for this meeting and some additional follow-up activities. Know that I, I'm pleasantly surprised at the, that the interest, that this opportunity, even an interim opportunity is drawing, not just from Washington State, but across the country. I believe you're, you're gonna have a very viable, strong pool of candidates to consider, including sitting superintendents who are interested in moving to the Columbia Valley, recently retired superintendents who have expressed interest, and executive cabinet level positions and others in leadership roles in school systems who aspire to the superintendency.
Okay, thank you. I think that answers my question. To the people that called and said, hey, I know somebody, but they didn't give me names, so I would have to get back in touch with them.
Yeah, please forward those to, to me, and if you've got contact information, that would be helpful. We're, we're, we're pretty good at sleuthing. If we don't have a contact information, our networks are, are pretty deep and we're able to activate those networks to get an email or a telephone number.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. At that slate meeting, we'll present three to five, and we will invite the board to provide direction on naming two to three finalists. That happens in an open meeting, and we actually use letters as a proxy for names because our recommendation is that the board conduct the search in a confidential manner. I've had several conversations with sitting superintendents who asked me today if, in fact, this would be a closed confidential search, recognizing that that sometimes influences whether or not they choose to make application. Questions about the June 7th slate meeting?
I think I understand it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we use Microsoft OneDrive. I will create folders for every applicant that is part of the slate. You'll see their materials in sequence consistent across each of the candidate files. So it'll be pretty uniform, and we scaffold this. We provide a memo in advance, and obviously, if anyone has difficulty accessing this confidential link, we're available by phone or by Zoom to provide some support. Let's talk a little bit about the finalist interviews with the board. These also, as I mentioned, will be conducted in executive session. The interview, again, will be approximately one hour in length, and there will be scripted a set of prepared questions by the firm. If you have a question or a topic you believe should, should be asked, please send that to me in an email. We've reserved the right sort of tailored language so that it's uniform and consistent, but we, we want to make sure that if you've got some questions that you want to make sure is posed, that you give us, you give us a little bit of lead time so that we have enough time to tailor that and then pivot that into the final document. If you could get questions or topics to me by June 7th, the morning of June 7th, I'll have enough time to work on integrating those, modifying those as appropriate, and then including them in the final set of questions.
Steve, I have a question for you. On the, the list of the, the candidates that we'll be looking at, I know initially we're looking for an interim, but could this, the interim candidates, I'm assuming that these candidates could also be candidates that could be applying for the full-time position. Is that correct?
That is correct, and several individuals that I've had conversations with today have expressed interest in serving on a continuing basis as the permanent superintendent.
Okay, that's good.
After each candidate interviews, as I mentioned, we'll do a debrief. We use a protocol as a way of identifying warm feedback, something that we've experienced during the course of the interview that was really positive about the candidate. We also ask for cool feedback, which is the opposite of something that was positively experienced. It's something that was maybe either off-putting or we're wondering about, or something that struck you as just, it created some level of discomfort for you. We, we ask that we follow that protocol for each of the interviews so that we have some way of really uniformly assessing the interview itself. Know that when we get to the final debrief, you'll be looking at all of the data inputs, including the materials that were submitted, including the referencing that the firm has conducted, including the referencing that the board has conducted, if you choose to participate in those references, and any of the optional background information that is pulled together by our third party. So all of that is considered, and we have a, another protocol that we use as a way of really assessing the right fit and match, given the current context and conditions that exist in Prosser School District. Questions about the finalist interview process? Pretty straight, pretty straightforward. We do come back into open session. The board, by motion, will then act on selecting a sole finalist, and a second, there's an opportunity for deliberation, again, using a letter as a proxy for that person. It usually takes two to three days to finalize the terms of contract, and we'll work on who will be representing the board, identify those individuals, and then get to work on contacting the finalist and then engaging in a conversation around the terms of the contract. Let me talk just briefly about finalist reference checks, and we do find these very illuminating. We find that it's very illuminating for board directors to participate in those calls and conversations, particularly when those calls and conversations are also with other board directors who have experienced the candidate's leadership. Although we also recognize that some board directors aren't comfortable in having those kinds of conversations, so it's really one of choice individually. We do have a standard reference form that we use, and we provide some scripted prompts as a way of starting the conversation, and then we ask that those get completed by a certain date. Those are then shipped to the lead consultant to me so that I can format that into a PDF and then get those uploaded into the candidate files, which you will have already had access to before the slate meeting. And we'll move just the selected finalists so that that gets updated and we're not getting muddied in other files where candidates are not advanced. So the question here is, and of course, we have two board directors, Alyssa and Anthony, who aren't here, whether or not you would be interested in participating in those calls.
Sure.
I would find it very interesting myself.
I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, I think we could all do a little bit of it, and I'm sure Elisa and Anthony would probably agree.
Yeah. Know that we will have had seven reference sources to consider for each finalist. Two letters of recommendation, which they are submitting already as part of their application materials. They have also been asked to identify three references that we can contact. And then as a standard business practice, Human Capital Enterprises identifies additional references from publicly available sources. So often, we will go to a district website, and if that candidate is a superintendent, we might identify the chief fiscal officer or business manager, their name, their telephone number, if that person was not identified as a reference. So we're trying to triangulate and get sources of information that can give us a broader view of the candidate's strengths and opportunities for growth in the future. We prepare a call list for each board director, so know that that will come to you with explicit instructions, contact information. And if we have two finalists and we're conducting four reference checks per finalist, that's about eight calls that need to be made. If you have three, that's 12 calls that need, so we'll just jigsaw that across the five.
So no cold calls?
No cold calls. In fact, what we do before we actually begin making those calls, we inform the finalists, and they're instructed to inform their references, including the references we identify so that they have a heads up before getting a call. Any questions about referencing?
No.
No.
Okay, super. Optional background checks, there's a price to this. We contract with a third-party firm that does these comprehensive background checks. It includes a criminal background check, a financial background check, and a news search. The fee for the comprehensive background check is $1,800. If we exclude the news search, it reduces the fee to $1,200 per finalist. We strongly recommend that boards do this as part of the due diligence, but we, we leave that up to the board. So I'll need some direction here. Obviously, we're not going to execute on this until after we identify the finalists on June 7th, but it often takes somewhere between seven to 10 days to complete these comprehensive background checks. So if it takes 10 days, we'll likely be at a place where the board has already acted on the sole finalist. Maybe we've reached terms on a contract, but often what we will do is we'll make an, an offer of employment condition on successfully passing the comprehensive background check. Sometimes it, it just depends on how busy the firm is. Sometimes, you know, we get these back in three to five days.
So I have a, maybe a question concerning that. So if we went ahead and did that, which I, I do think it's probably prudent to do, but I think in, one of the things I read from you, Steve, was that once we identify the finalist, the one that we've decided, if it's contingent upon that, and that background check doesn't come in, but we've already let the other candidates know that they didn't make, you know, that we didn't select them, does it put us back at square one? Are we gonna have to conduct interviews and?
We'll go after number two.
Yeah, we typically have not found any issues with any of the finalists that we advanced. That doesn't mean that that would be the case here in Prosser. In the event that that were to occur, and we found something, the board found something that was troublesome, that made you uncomfortable, then your options are to move to candidate number two and extend an offer of employment and explain the circumstances or start the process over. That, that, that is really the two options that, that you have available. It, it likely, you know, depending upon who's sitting in the number two spot, it, it likely would not preclude that number two from accepting an offer of employment, but sometimes, you know, people you know, make decisions that may or may not necessarily make sense for the organization, but make sense to where they're at personally and professionally.
Okay, thank you.
I think I spoke to the HCE blast already, and again, pleasantly surprised with the number of inquiries and responses. In fact, I told Jason today, my calendar has been absolutely booked with one-on-one calls with people who are really interested in learning more. That's a good problem to have, really, very good problem to have. We spoke to the nature of conducting this expedited search process in a confidential manner. Happy to respond to questions that anyone may have regarding that recommendation.
Have any questions?
No, I'm good.
I don't.
Okay. And then the last item is really HCE's legal responsibility for records retention connected to the search. So at every step in the process, we'll remind you that all hard copies, documents, materials connected to applicants and finalists will need to be returned to Human Capital Enterprises. Any electronic documents that you've saved to computers or phones will need to be deleted and removed permanently from hard drives. Documents, hard copy documents can be delivered to Selena or to me if we're in person. We review all of the documents and retain those at our California headquarters for retention purposes. So just want to give you that sort of heads up. So after the meeting on the 7th, if there are any notes taken or any hard copies of documents that you may have printed out, if, if you still need those, certainly you can keep those, but at the very end of the search, we'll need to collect all of those materials and make sure that any electronic are deleted and permanently removed from hard drives. Any questions about that?
No.
Okay. As a follow-up to. As a follow-up to our conversation tonight, I'll follow up with more specificity around some of these dates relative to when you can anticipate having access to the confidential link on June fifth. Questions or topics for finalist interviews on June seventh? We'll ask that the references be conducted over the course of three days between June eighth and tenth with the reference notes you've taken shipped to me by June eleventh. So all of that can get formatted and uploaded into the OneDrive candidate files. But I'll put all of this in writing so that we don't lose track of any of it. That'll come to Jason tomorrow with Selena CC. And Selena will distribute that to the entire board. Any additional questions?
Yeah, I did have a couple. And I know, you know, looking at like expenses and trying to really watch our expenses best we can. Steve, I know we're gonna end up paying travel expenses, which is customary. I get it. Is there a feel for how many of these can be conducted via Zoom? And how many are preferred to be conducted in person?
We always recommend that finalist interviews are conducted in person. It's possible that you might have a finalist who is on the East Coast that would require airfare, hotel accommodations. And, you know, really, that's at the direction of the board. If the board has an interest in minimizing costs for travel for finalists, we can certainly entertain doing a Zoom interview with that particular finalist.
So if I, so like speaking, you know, as we look through our base, our calendar of dates here, I know on, was it next Wednesday is the seventh? You're looking to come over on that day to walk us through a lot of this? Is that something that can be done via Zoom? Or is it something that we need to do in person?
My preference is to do that in person. There's intimacy of being in the room and engaging in those conversations more directly. So that would be my preference. You know, I have family in the Tri-Cities. I don't anticipate having a hotel cost as long as my brother will be up.
Long as your brother's still speaking to you, huh?
He is still speaking.
Oh, good.
Yeah, we have a great relationship. Although it can turn sour, you know. And, you know, for the event on the seventh, depending of how, depending upon how late we go, I likely will just turn around and drive home. You know, a three and a half hour drive if we wrap up by seven thirty at home. So that would be my preference on just the one-day sort of commitments. If we're there engaged in finalist interviews on the twelve, thirteenth, and fourteenth, obviously, I'm not going to drive back and forth through three consecutive days. I would likely travel in on the eleventh or the twelfth and just stay with family through the weekend.
Okay. No, that works. My next question, and this actually was something Alyssa brought up. She's in favor of doing more of an in-depth investigation, you know, the third party. So I guess, do we need to let you know yes or no on that as soon as possible?
We'll need direction no later than June seventh. So I'll ask at that slate meeting whether or not you want to conduct that background check. At that time, we will know the names of the finalists advanced by the board and we'll move forward with that as quickly as practical on June eighth.
Perfect.
Probably should have that information. Yeah. Going forward.
Okay.
We do strongly recommend that. It's just, you know, it's.
Yes, makes good sense.
Have that before we invest a whole lot more time and money into that person.
Okay.
And Jason, as I recall, you're going to be traveling on those dates for the finalist interviews. Is that still true? Or did I misunderstand?
No, yeah, I will be gone that entire week. I can zoom in or I can call in and be a part of those interviews. But I will be out of state the entire week.
Yeah. So we've actually done both in-person simultaneous remote interviews with other districts in the past. So we'll navigate that together. We'll just need to know who our point of contact is at some point on the technology side. But that should not be problematic as long as you have stable broadband connectivity wherever you're at, Jason.
Well, hopefully the phone works, at least at a minimum. But yeah. But yeah, it shouldn't be. I'm not gonna be out in the middle of nowhere, so.
Okay, super.
Yeah, it's very doable. I zoomed in from Hawaii, and I've zoomed in from Arizona. So it's pretty easy to do, you know.
Zoomed in from GrubU.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Well, is there anything else for the good of the order, Jason, or?
I don't think so. You guys have any more questions?
No, I think I'm good, Jason.
No, it's all pretty. I mean, it's all pretty well straightforward, and I appreciate the clear. I think that helps alleviate. You answer a lot of questions prior, you know, prior to even coming in. So I appreciate that.
Well, I so look, I so look forward to seeing you all next week in person. Unless there was any other comments, I will sign off.
Sounds good. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, you guys take good care. Bye-bye.
Okay, well, that was shorter than I expected. So that's good.
It's gonna be really busy, isn't it?
Yep, it's gonna be a long month.
Yeah.
Sorry.
We have a lot of other stuff mixed in there, too.
Yeah. So with that, we actually have a special meeting tomorrow at noon via Zoom. So.
And then this on Friday?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that's it. Yeah. So tomorrow at noon via Zoom. And then on the seventh, we'll actually have another special board meeting. And I think we've contemplated changing that to six PM, not five thirty.
Okay, six o'clock?
Yeah, it coincides with the special ed director's interview process. It may push till six, so we'll move that slate meeting to six.
Okay.
With that, it's meeting adjourned. Thank you.